Okay, we're on slide. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. And we'll go around the room and introduce ourselves. We'll start with Paula.
Paula Jackinetti, clerk and recorder.
Teton County Sanitarium, Austin Moyer.
Brian Coltherly, Teton County Planner.
Brian the Door, Commissioner.
Joe Delwell, Commissioner.
Sam Carlson, Commissioner.
Tracy Went, Senator Watershed Group.
Erling Jewell, I manage Greenfield Irrigation District, and I also serve on the board for Sun River Watershed Group.
Lydia Martinson, Shodewich Department.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for coming. We have minutes from August 7th.
I would move to approve those minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We don't have any road encroachments. So that brings us for Tracy. You're up.
Jumping right in.
Yep.
Thanks so much for putting me on the agenda. I feel bad that it's been so long since I've been up here to see you guys. 2025, I guess I haven't been here since mid or early 2024, so I have a lot to update you guys on, but I'll keep it short. Our biggest news is that we hired a permanent staff person. So, working with me, her name is Madison, and she would've come today, but she's out working on stream gauges. So she has a hydrology background. She has been doing a lot of flow measurements for us and working with our stream gauge contractor to... Some of the gauges, like the Flower Gauge at Brokano and the Fort Shaw Gauge, have been not recording quite correctly. So they've been doing a lot of, like, field measurements and a lot of work out there to try and get those reading right, which they are right now. So they're out there checking on it again. She's also doing our water quality monitoring, April through October, and organizing all of our outreach events and volunteer events. She started with us in January, and she's actually brought even more work. So next year, we're going to... If our board approves it in October, we're going to have a Big Sky Watershed Corps member, which is basically a paid internship. So there will be three of us working together next year. So we're just getting busier and busier. One of the things we've done the last two years is up here in Teton County is our rain barrel workshops. We had the first two down in Great Falls in 2020 and '22, and then I got a grant to fund several consecutive years. So with the short water up here and the water restrictions and stuff that have happened the last couple of years, we thought, let's go help folks out and give them a way to collect rainwater so they can use that to water their gardens. So we've had two of them. That means there's 80 rain barrels up here, each with a capacity of about 30 gallons. So they've been really well attended. They always sell out. People enjoy it. And I feel like it does a little bit to help. So, yeah, so then we have our water management program. We have our... Twice a year, we have the Water Management Working Group meetings in April and October. So the next one will be October 15th, and that's going to be in Great Falls with the Conservation District. I'll send you guys details on that when it gets a little closer. But that'll basically be a recap of this challenging water season, and I look forward to how the water will be managed over the non-irrigation season. We did do some extra phone calls this year because water was so challenging this year. And Erling, I'll talk a bit about more about that, I'm sure. But we did a lot of extra communication this summer to try and get those water users all talking to each other and making sure, you know, Fort Shaw and GID are measuring their water the same and, you know, accounting for things the same and that everybody's trying to also keep, you know, how do you keep water in the river and water for crops at the same time. So it's definitely been a challenge. Our biggest project is on Muddy Creek, and the bulk of the work is down in Cascade County. It's about three miles of river restoration down by Vaughn, or stream restoration. But it's kind of also a pioneer project for us. We haven't done restoration since I've been here. Al did a bunch down in the same area, you know, 20, 30 years ago. So hopefully, we'll see how this works out and then decide which area to conquer next to just kind of keep working at those bank problems on Muddy Creek. We're also helping GID with funding of their expansion of J-Wasteway, which will help them manage the water better coming off of the bench there. And then I included for you guys a list of all of our events that we had this past year. Some of those are reoccurring events, like our Freeze Out Lake Cleanup. We've been doing that every year for four or five years now. And then some of them are just as needed. We have Bearware Workshops where FWP comes and teaches people how to avoid conflicts with grizzlies if they're out camping or recreating, but then also how to avoid attracting them into your property. And we talk about what resources are available, electric fencing or drive-over mats, that kind of thing, to help deter them from interfering with your livelihood. And then I have a list of just general other things that we've been working on, kind of on the bottom there. So I don't know if you guys have any questions for me?
No, I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay. And we, you know, typically, we hit you guys up for a contribution each year. So if that's something that you guys want to do again this year, let me know, and I will send you notes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. So GID's been on the Sun River Watershed Board for many, many years, and I've been honored to be part of that for the last eight to 10 years myself. But just amazing the amount of work that that group has been doing in the Teton area, Teton County, Cascade County... Well, anything to do with the Sun River, obviously. And she just keeps expanding and growing momentum, which is good. And you could tell that by adding staff. That's a good sign that they're doing more and more projects and getting more and more momentum, so... Anyway, so... Do you want me to segue into GID? I don't mean to shoehorn into your...
Yeah, no, we're fine.
Oh, that's fine.
I'll just kind of, you know, as you realize, this year's water season was very challenging. We're into the year two of a drought, as far as Sun River goes. And again, this year, we were unable to fill Gibson and unable to fill Willow Creek reservoirs because of the inflows into the Sun River. So our season was truncated. Our allotment was reduced accordingly to one foot, like it was last year, 12 inches of water for the producers. We did finish a couple weeks sooner than we did last year, so that was a challenge. So we're hoping that, you know, we come out of this drought cycle, get back to normal, so... And I just wanted to touch base on some of the projects that you guys have helped through sponsorship letters and been advocates for us. I'll just start up near Gibson. The Sun River Ridg projects moving right along, making good progress. They had some issues with the drill shaft, drill rig. Sent them back about a week, but they're back at it. And we're still looking at cutting the ribbon for that bridge next July, July 2026. So they're working on the foundations. The girders are being fabricated, and they should be brought out this fall, so they're making good progress. Moving down the canal, the Tunnel 3 project is where we had a lot of collapsing in the tunnel. Hundred-year-old tunnel, 11-foot diameter tunnel is failing. We had first year of construction, first phase of construction, and there were some issues, some hiccups. It's some challenging, unorthodox work that we kind of all had a little learning lesson. The contractors still have some warranty work right now. And then we'll do Phase 2 next, end of next water season, fall of 2026. Moving further down the canal, the Arnold Cooley Project is moving along. And I got some pictures I can throw around. And a couple of things, the powerhouse, you know, we set the turbines last April. We got the turbines across the border before the tariffs kicked in. They were manufactured in Canada. We still got to get the generators across somehow. But that structure's going along nicely, and GID crews are doing all the work themselves. And then the transmission line connecting Arnold Cooley will be done September 6th, and they're kind of at the tail end and getting ready to hang wire. It's about a three-mile connection from the transmission line we built four years ago, the 69 KV that runs up almost to the Gibson area. So that'll be done, and we're hoping to be online still spring of 2026 generating power. And then moving downstream, down canal a little further, the Pishkin Inlet Hydro Power. We just got our NEPA compliance documents from the Bureau of Reclamation, and so our life construction between Arnold Cooley and Pishkin Inlet will start this fall. And so that's exciting. And I'll have to look at my list here. Okay, you guys also helped write some support letters for the Mary Taylor Biification Project near Fairfield, and we were going after some CDS monies, Congressional Directive Spending Request. And it doesn't look like we were successful either at the state or representative level that there were a lot of requests, and ours probably wasn't sexy enough. But I still appreciate your guys' effort writing us a support letter. We did go after some federal low-interest loan money from Reclamation Department of Interior just in case the CDS money did not come through. So we do have a Plan B to move that project forward. And then, as Tracy mentioned a little bit on the groundwater study in her summary, we partnered with the Sun River Watershed Group to try and get more information on the interaction with irrigation and the local groundwater system there, Fairfield, Greenfield's bench area. And they did a lot of data collection, wells, surface water, irrigation canals, and then a lot of the runoff leaving the district. And I'm not sure. We need to get an update from them probably in a couple weeks. But they may have enough data to put together the report, or they may elect to come back and do some more testing and measuring next year, another cycle. But that report is really important because as GID continues doing with modernization and improvements on the district, that's along with that modernization, there's improved water management practices that are implemented and that all relates to conservation and that all relates to even more stress on, you know, the recharge of the groundwater system. So we're trying to find ways to mitigate that negative effect because we're going to be better with the water and not allow it to seep into the ground as readily. With some of the water savings, we could have some dedicated recharge areas for, like, the town of Fairfield and then Tri-County Water System. But, you know, the people have independent wells scattered throughout the bench that might be a little trickier for them, unfortunately. So that's really all I got to say. We're doing lots. We're trying to stay busy. We've got, you know, 100-year-old infrastructure that's crumbling before our eyes, and we know what happens if you just sit there and watch it. We saw a lot of that happen at North and St. Mary's. Those projects are just... They knew they were failing. They weren't going to fix themselves or get better with time. So it was inevitable that they were going to fail. And they never failed in the offseason. They always fail when you're trying to use them, unfortunately. And, you know, when those things happen, there's huge environmental damage, huge economic damage. They're, you know, go without water for a year. And then the cost to reinstate the structures is two or three times more because you're doing it under round-the-clock crisis, you know, emergency mode as opposed to designing it out and chipping away at it at your schedule and on your budget, you know, and before it fails catastrophically. So our board is trying to aggressively stay ahead of that looming issue by working to replace all of our infrastructure before it fails mid-season and develop revenue streams that allow us to fund. Again, we appreciate your support and our efforts.
Yep. We're happy to do it, Erling. That's a big part of our county. Well, thank you, Erling, Tracy. And like I said, you don't have to sit through the whole meeting if you're done.
What do you want to do?
It's up to you.
Up to me? Bye and get back to work?
I've got extras if you ever do want.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Yeah. And it'll come around.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the bridge contract, or bridges contract. So we heard back from Staley Engineering, and Nick sent us the bid tabulations. And the next step for us is to sign a notice of award that Staley sent to us. And the winning bid was Timberline Contracting out of Billings. We had five bidders. They were the low bidder, and Staley said that they do a good job and they're a reputable company. So their recommendation is to sign a notice of award for Timberline Contracting.
I would move to accept the notice of award for Timberline Contracting.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? And Mel, if you remember, this is the state program that...
Yes.
We have to pay for the projects, but then the state completely reimburses us. And we're very appreciative of that because to get five bridges fixed is going to be great.
We want to do it, yeah.
So all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Brings us to Brian.
Okay.
Sailor subdivision.
Yep. Okay, so this is the request to approve the final plat for the Sailor Minor Subdivision. This is a singular tract, and basically, the reason why the subdivision was done is to remove the ag covenant that is currently on it. Recommendation is to approve it. There's nothing that would flag any reason to hold it up any longer than it has been going, so... And we've had no public comments, other than from the last meeting, which was from Barb. Hopefully, they would divide it a little bit further, but that's about the extent of it. It is missing the Examining Land Surveyor Block. I spoke to Dan, and he said as long as the ELS letter that he provided us is filed with it, we're good. And I have the milars for after the meeting for you to sign.
Do I have a motion on that?
I would move to approve that. Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. So you said it's removing an ag covenant?
Yes.
We do not have a resolution to remove the ag covenant.
I was going to bring that up.
We don't have a resolution to remove an ag covenant.
Yeah, my, the certificate of subdivision approval ish document, I've got a spot for the resolution number and then also the certificate of survey number for... That's going to have to be filled out when it gets filed. But I think this one requires a resolution. Since it needed a resolution to put it on in the first place.
Yep, that makes sense to me. So we can't approve it without the resolution for lifting the ag covenant?
Oh, okay.
I didn't think of that.
Yeah, I never...
I didn't realize there was an ag covenant that was given left.
That's the only reason why it had to go through subdivision review to have the ag covenant lifted.
Yeah, they're not cutting up any lines or anything.
Yep.
As is.
Yep.
So we'll have to table it until our September 4th meeting?
Okay.
That's all we can do. I mean, we have to jump through the hoops. So we need an ag covenant resolution.
All right.
Okay, well, we'll just put that on the table until September 4th then. So that brings us to family transfer resolution. Let's have a discussion about that, Brian.
Okay. There are some counties within Montana that have removed the family transfer restriction, which is whenever a piece of property is divided up and given to it, you can, you know, if you have 20 acres, you want to give five acres to your son or daughter, to your family. There's a list of specific family members that are allowed to receive the property. It exempts the subdivision review, and you're allowed to do that whatever you want or whatever size of lot you want to give your children or parents, whatever. But what happens is, though, the state has a requirement that basically, once it goes into the transfer to the family member, it cannot be sold or transferred for two years. Some counties have opted to just remove the two-year timeframe, and, I mean, at that time, they can do, you know...
Whatever.
You know, a quick claim deed, and the land could go straight. So basically, what happened is if I transferred to my daughter, basically, my daughter could turn around and just sell it. And that's a reason why, a lot of reasons why Montana has actually changed, like, look, there's a two-year restriction. It was just a quick way to avoid subdivisions. They're a little bit more pricier, and they're a little more in-depth. I know we talked about us not doing as well because of the tracking purpose.
That was the reason that my concern is, is that it's left up to the clerk and recorders to track the two-year...
Right.
So that they can't sell or... And that's another additional responsibility that I don't feel is, should be the clerk and recorder's responsibility. But also, we have very few family transfers that go through. So the legislature allows the commissioners to exempt that, to exempt Teton County from having the two-year holdback.
Okay. So yesterday, I went to Lewis and Clark, sat with the planning department there and their head clerk and recorder, and asked them how they track it. Basically, all they do is their planning department updates a list with individuals that do a family transfer at the date of the time the plat is recorded. The date is entered in by the clerk and recorder, and then every time somebody comes in and wants to do a transfer or try to sell that property, they just have to verify that name is not on the list. If it is on the list, they just got to verify the date at the time of that draft or record was done. And then if it's outside the two years, of course, they can transfer or sell it. Because within that, they are restricted from doing so. And that's how Lewis and Clark does it. And they said their average, we probably have probably just as much as they do. They had 15 in last year, and we had almost a dozen.
A family transfer?
Yeah, family transfers are actually our bigger.
We don't have resolutions for that many. So if you're given family transfers...
Well, they all go through the process. So the family transfers that have been done go through the clerk and recorder's office, and they recorded these family transfers with the...
Yeah, that's true, because they wouldn't need a resolution to transfer.
No.
It's just, yeah.
I was like, that's a new one! That was now explained in planning class. I was like, we have some work to do. We've got some backdating to do here.
My conclusion, I was thinking of...
Ag, yes. Oh, ag, we've had, the whole time I've been here, so... It really comes down to staying with the state. I don't think it's that hard because I can easily, as I file, I can add a name to a list, and then that just comes part of the checklist of like, hey, add the date of time recorded on this list. They would just have to verify. Then it would still keep the state restriction in. But we can also move to not add it. It's, like I said, like a dozen, you know.
I'd expect there to be more if you get rid of that restriction because...
Oh, there'd be a lot more problems.
It's a very easy way to get around subdivision review.
Yeah, that's the kicker.
You don't get around the sanitary review, though. So if they're doing a five-acre lot to their daughter or something like that, it's still going through the DDQ. And if it's over 20 acres, then there's not going to be anything.
So I mean, it's something that has to be addressed, and it doesn't necessarily have to be addressed by the commission unless we request to have the resolution on that. But it's just another thing. Somebody's got to have the basis. And since it goes to the county planner first, I think, you know, you're right. If it's not a hard issue for you to do, then you put it, and then you just put that on your checklist that it is this and it needs to be documented. Because we can document it in the explanations on our system. It allows us to put memos on there to say, hey, this is a family transfer on this date. Cannot sell or transfer until this date.
Well, and I...
As long as people look at that, though. That's the thing. We have farmers and ranchers, and people come in, and they just file their own without a title company or an attorney. That's where we get in trouble because they don't look, and then they just file it, and then we sometimes get backed up, and we don't stop to go look. It's another thing that we have to hold a document for to go and say, okay, we're not, we can't record this right now because we have to go into, we have to go look at it.
So Lewis and Clark explained it, and they made do the memo like you said. I didn't get that far away. They just had a list. So I would update your list, and then, once it's filed, the plat number, and then, of course, the date it was filed. And that would basically, whenever you're doing a quick claim deed or whatever, you just check that list, like, don't, you know...
Well, that's something we can discuss. We don't have to discuss it right now.
Yep.
Can you figure out a...
Well, if it's doable, I would prefer not during the resolution because Austin's right, it's just going to open up another avenue to a little bit of subdivision review. That's my feeling.
Yeah, and it's fine. It's just we have to figure out who's going to do it and who's going to track it.
And make it work.
And make it work.
Sure.
Because it ends up being Paula Jackinetti who's responsible for anything that is filed that is not lawful.
Yeah.
I can see that.
Okay, we won't take any action on that then. Any further discussion on that? No questions, Mel?
No, thank you.
Okay, CBA approvals. I think we've got all three contracts hammered out. And the courthouse contract settled for a dollar an hour and full insurance. And then the road contract settled for a dollar an hour. We paid full insurance for the employee. And there was an issue with our... We've been having issues with the CDLs, Mel. And the contract says that they have 90 days to get their CDL, and that's not workable. And we talked back and forth with Mike, and he said his preference would be to leave the contract language the same, but then we'll meet with him and work on an MOU. Well, Kobo will meet with him and work on an MOU to try to figure out how to make that a little workable. It's becoming harder to get a CDL, so that's how we're going to deal with that part of that contract. So the contract is done, we're ready to sign, but there will be an MOU coming up at some point. And when we do, I'll put that on the agenda. We'll do it here.
Is the difficulty that there's not enough time in 90 days to get it scheduled? Or is it that the test is getting harder? Or what's the...
Yeah, the test is, there are more restrictions. The test is getting harder, and the timeframe doesn't work because the, they have, the state realized there is a problem, and now they have schools that you can send your people to for four or five days, and they actually work with the people on how to pass the test and drive trucks and stuff. But it's just, it's just more difficult to do it in the timeframe that we had in the contract.
90 days just doesn't cut it.
It's not working, so... And then the sheriff was just the dollar an hour and full insurance. They set it for that. So if I can get a motion on, I suppose, each individual contract.
I would move to accept the courthouse contract.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
And I would move to accept the sheriff's contract.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then I would move to accept the road contract with the MOU coming down the road.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, that's over. We advertised that ambulance that we declared surplus a while ago, and we have received no bids. And that brings us to mill value to cash resolutions. We have Resolution 25-16. And Paula, would you do a little background on these?
The legislature has stated that any mill value voted levy has to be put either... has to be put either, you set it for the rest of its life as a mill value, which was what it was worth at last year's setting, or you can go with a cash value and then have the rate of inflation to follow it through. And what these resolutions, what these resolutions do is to set it per cash value. And with the rate of inflation added to it each time, but we have to do a resolution every year to set what they could levy for the previous, for this, for this current year, which I said, they gave us a, we do it through the tax levy determination sheet. So we have the basis of what it started with, which was the mill levy that they could have fully appropriated in the 2025 fiscal year. So you set that, then it received the 2.11% inflation value. So if, so like last year was fifty-one thousand and I think thirty-eight dollars for the library and the council on aging. Well, this year their mill was, their two mills was worth fifty-four thousand, five hundred and forty-five percent. Something like that, so it did increase. And then next year we'll put that base back and then it, you take the ad valorem, just like you do with the other ones. You do that in and then you'll get your, so cash value really works better.
Thank you for that clarification.
Unless, unless, unless it goes really down the hole, which they've never decreased our rate of inflation, so.
No.
But it would fluctuate with the mill value, correct? So a year like this.
Yes.
I don't know what your mill value did, but the city of Shoto's dropped and the school district, high school and elementary dropped.
I understand too.
Okay.
Two thousand bucks.
If you, how does that work then with what you just said, Paula?
With the cash? So it will fluctuate the same way as it does with the road and the, and the countywide. The fluctuation, I think, will still benefit. Mako did, they went through it, they did some scenarios and they, they recommended the cash to put it at a dollar amount value. Because the, the way that the economy is going is hopefully, next year they just, they don't know what it's going to be. They don't know what it's going to be doing. But they figured it was safer to go with, here's your cash. You can get up to the four percent next year with rate of inflation and they, but it's all, it's all a crap shoot, really.
So this year, would the library's funding go down because the mill value has gone down?
Well, but not on theirs. Because theirs is set at what they received last year, plus the 2.11%. And so it actually, the mill value went up. So instead of getting one mill, they got 1.13 mill. But we can't, I mean, I do the mills just because it makes sense in our heads.
So which, which mill, mill levies are then affected?
It would be the library, the council on aging and the extension.
And the library has one levy that is a cash amount regardless. That's how we voted. We voted at X dollars and it just stays.
The library has.
But then we have a two-mill levy.
Ambulance has.
That was tied to the, just two mills. So if two mills raised ten grand each and it was twenty grand, that was what they would get. But if the next year, two mills only raises eight grand, they'd only get sixteen. So that.
We really went with the recommendation of Mako because they did a study and, how do we know, Mel? It's, it could go either way. So they just felt that with the economy and with the way that the, because the value's going to go down next year.
Yeah.
But who knows what it's going to do in the year after.
So basically, you guys have to revisit this every year?
Yes.
Whether you're going to go with cash.
No, this is set.
So if we pick cash now, you're cash forever until the legislature changes again?
Which I would bet is 2027.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, it's confusing.
I guess so.
Okay, I need a motion on resolution twenty-five dash sixteen.
I would move.
Which is the library one.
I would move to adopt resolution twenty-five sixteen.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. I need a motion on resolution twenty-five dash seventeen, which is the Teton County Council on Aging.
And move to adopt twenty-five seventeen as well.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. And now I need a motion on twenty-five dash eighteen, which is the extension one.
I would also move to adopt resolution twenty-five dash eighteen.
And I will second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we got those done. Thank you, Paula, for doing all that.
Well, and, and Mel, I, you know, we, we, I looked at both, we looked at both. It doesn't matter, you know, you look at the forty-five thousand dollars that the, um, extension got way back when. I mean, think what it would have helped if the years been going up. This is, it's, it's just tough to call. I mean, we, it's, it's our county government. We never really know what we're going to have or what we're not going to have.
And that's always been a crap shoot because if the mill value is going up, that's the way to go. But if the mill value drops, that's not the way to go.
Yeah. Probably next year, we don't know, but then hopefully it'll settle out and then even, but they'll always get their rate of inflation.
If you do the cash. So even if, in my scenario, mill value fell, so the library got twenty thousand the year before, but it's going to get sixteen thousand this year, there'd be a 2.11% or some percent. So they would still lose funding, but it'd go up a little bit.
If they're, well, oh, with the cash?
Right.
Yes, yes, you still get that built in.
You get the built in, you lose the, the amount of difference between last year's mill levy value and this, how much a mill will raise.
We'll see, we'll see. We're hoping that's what, what it does.
Okay.
Because, because it's their, it's their own.
Right, exactly.
So it's, yeah. You still plug in the taxable valuation, but I don't know how that impacts because you still come up with the.
The cash number. Okay.
And like with the.
So if I'm understanding correctly, I'm sorry, I don't hear best meeting. Under the cash thing, under this change, even if your mill value drops, you're still going to get the same amount you got the year before plus the rate of inflation.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if you can, your, your basis is going to stay.
Okay, and the basis is based on last year's.
It's, so your fifty-one thousand, well, that was my basis.
Okay.
So, and so this year now is fifty-four something. So that's going to move to my, next year's ad valorem.
Okay.
And then that'll get the two percent increase. And then you'll throw in your, okay, how does this adjust to our?
Mill.
Yeah, I don't, you know, it's all internal in the Department of Revenues. Yeah. But they will start, yeah, but they will start with what the, the ad valorem is.
It sounds like what they're saying is that this is a safer way for
Yes.
the entities to go because if there is a dramatic fluctuation in the value of the mill, you're going to be able to admission to, to levy whatever you need to get to that original basis plus.
Plus that.
The inflation.
However, the taxable valuation figures in there.
Right, right, okay, so.
I, I can show you the worksheets.
I think, I think I'm getting the both, the broad outline.
Okay.
Of it. Okay, sorry.
Nope, that's fine. It's a good discussion to have.
Yep. For everybody, for all of you guys.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so the last thing on the agenda, I will open a budget hearing for the next two weeks and then close on September fourth. And we'll take comment on our budget and people can come get copies if they're so inclined.
September fourth, Joe?
Mm-hmm. I, I would shoot for October, but you didn't let me do that last meeting.
What are the highlights of the budget, Paula?
Um, I'm, right now, other than, um, what we talked, we're, we're, like checks and balances and we're doing okay.
How much did, what was your rate of inflation that you were actually allowed to grow your property tax?
2.11.
You're going 2.11.
Yeah.
And did, um, so you want, and I described that as a 2.11% increase in property tax revenue.
Mm-hmm. The greatest, I could.
That's okay. Um, did any of your other entitlement, entitlement go up or down or?
Pilt was up a little.
A little, they all were up just a little bit.
Not dramatically, but they're all moving pretty simple.
And do you know what Pilt has done for where you're at in Pilt? Because that's a, that's a October to September fund, is it the federal?
No, we get that in June.
Okay, for this fiscal year?
Yeah.
So what did, what did you guys end up getting this year?
Well, we get it in the end of June, but it was for 2025.
It was eight hundred, yeah.
Nine hundred and three thousand.
Nine hundred and three thousand.
And is that also up a little bit?
Yep.
And obviously you guys have a building sort of going up. Out there, there's some disrupted dirt.
Something like that.
What were you able to budget for that building in this fiscal year?
We're still trying to. Where are we at on that? Is it 2.4?
2.4, and that's the structure with basically the plumbing and electrical access and the drainage and everything else completed. Uh, there's nothing done inside.
Okay. And so you've got that, the full 2.4 budgeted for this.
Now, we've been.
I was going to say probably what you didn't already extend out of that in last, in 24, 25.
In 2025.
Right? Because you've been paid, you've had to pay.
Yes.
Did you have to pay before the end of 25?
Yes, so in remaining in the CARES Act, we have six hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars.
Four hundred and eighty.
Mm-hmm. Six hundred and eighty thousand, four eighty. And then on the LATCF, we have seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and eight hundred, eight, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Seven eighty-three, eight three five. And then again, the hospital one, I don't have that, it's in the thousand line, but I believe it's four forty-five roughly, but I can get you that number.
And, and that's, I'm just looking at your budget, is there, the building project, maybe you want to touch on windows? Are we doing windows in 2025, 26?
Thank you for bringing that up. Yes. Our planner did find a contractor and he is going to possibly do it late fall, early winter.
So we just confirmed with him that we're going to move forward. He is contacting the window manufacturer who is down in billings. Uh, they are going to give us a couple of dates to schedule to do a full walkthrough. And then the, the manufacturer and the contractor would like to sit down with commissioners and clerk and recorder to work through a few options and see if they can cut it a little bit more. Um, they're just going to walk through every window layout and number them and how they're going to be manufactured when they come to us and then sit down with you and give you a few options. And we may be able to skim a little bit more off the total.
Because he was at, what number was he?
Three hundred and two.
Three hundred and two. And we went out for bids two or three times, Mel, and we've never, we couldn't find anybody that was even interested in doing it. So I'm really glad Brian came up with this guy.
And Brian, do you have a name on that company?
Jason Lidle. Lidle Construction, I think it is.
Lidle Construction, all right.
And local, yes, even better. And with possible installation later this fall or early winter?
That's what we're hoping.
How many windows do you, do you have?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
Oh, sorry, man.
So in addition to the building and the windows projects, are there any other big projects knocking around in this budget that people should know about?
Nope.
Otherwise, just status quo, continuing to provide the services that you have been providing?
Yeah, the only, only other purchase, the road department's going to try to purchase another belly dump. We have four semi-tractors and only three belly dumps. And it would make the gravel hauling this one more efficient. But it's a pretty tight budget.
Yeah. And is, is the money in the road budget for the, the belly dump?
Yep.
Okay, okay. What does a belly dump go for?
Well, I found brand new ones in Texas for forty-two thousand dollars. Used ones up here in Montana are around sixty. So we're, we're hoping somewhere in between there. They're, they're not inexpensive.
And just remind me one more time, I promised us the last question. What did insurance do? Your health insurance, which you paid a hundred percent for the employee, how did that, what was it last year and what is it this year?
About the price?
Yeah, the monthly premium.
It was a little over a hundred dollars a month. Wasn't it fourteen percent?
Yeah, but I mean, it went up to eight, seven, nine from, oh, Melody, I'd have to get that too for you.
This is significant and.
It's, it's, our, our budget this year for it is five hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars.
And we would really like to keep funding the full amount per employee and I'm not sure if we're going to be able to continue to do that in the future because it was a big hit.
Fourteen percent is not small change.
No. No.
And that covers all about thirty-five people?
I think we have.
It's more than that.
I think it was fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight.
I think, but I can, okay, I never know.
Okay.
Any more questions?
You're regretting that you asked that. Um, no, that sounds like we hit the highest.
Okay, commission reports. I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
Public comment?
Are you leaving?
Yes, today is my final day at Teton County.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh.
Um, I, sorry, I looked at the open budget meeting and realized I had to start meeting yesterday to discuss the sanitary budget, so we can do that after. But inspections are looking manageable for anybody that comes in late in the year. There's probably a dozen left that, that could be done. How it works is if we hit ninety percent of the category, the county gets all the funding for all the inspection licensing fees. Uh, if they don't get done, they're, you're just not going to get the licensing fee. Uh, so it's not a huge deal if, if it takes a while to get a new sanitary, those ones don't get done. The bigger concern is going to be septic and subdivision review uh, because we don't want to be holding up projects like this where just because you don't have a sanitary that actually look at the exemption. Uh, in a rare case, you're going to have to have somebody actually write up that, like lifting agricultural covenant, which is going to be a little bit more time consuming. But hopefully we'll have some options available for, for doing that. Uh, I've been telling people if they, that I have ongoing subjects with, just to be taking really, really good pictures, good measurements. Um, and that way whoever replaces me when they come in, they'll be able to take a look at what got done, what permit I had ready for them, um, and, and be able to permit the system retroactively if, if the notes are good enough.
So you were going to look at that consultant from Mark County, how did that turn out?
Uh, I sent you folks an email yesterday with what his like formal proposal would be. Most of that proposal is the DPHHS inspections. Like I said, we're looking pretty good for the year because I've been, I've been rushing, I was in power all day yesterday. Again, that's why I missed the meeting. But like I said, if you get a new sanitarian towards the end of the year, they should have enough time to take care of those. Um, I don't think he's going to have time to actually do any of them anyways. He said he's kind of been stretched or expanded pretty quickly because I think he's got like eight counties or so that he. Um, at least consults for in some capacity, some of them isn't all, all those inspections. Um, some of them isn't all septic and subdivision review. Um, so I'm not exactly sure what his workload is, but he said that he would definitely be able to cover septic, which has been pretty quiet this year. We don't have a lot of construction going on. And then subdivision review as well. But that's just one option, I know, I know there might be other options for, especially subdivision review. But the one other person I thought of that does this kind of consulting work, she's retiring at the end of the year, so she wasn't looking for any extra work. But I think these were going to be the people that she recommended.
I hate to see you go.
Yeah, it's been a.
Thank you for.
How long have you been with us, Austin?
Uh, just under ten years.
Well, it's been good, haven't you?
Yeah, it's been, it's been great working.
Yeah, you're going to be missed.
And you, you guys are advertising to try to.
I think there's an admin account.
I believe there is. That's how I cottoned on to the idea that Austin might leak it.
You read the paper.
Yes, exactly.
That was funny, I, I went into an inspection this week and I think word got out because I walked in and. Two minutes into the inspection, he's like, wait, why are you here, didn't you quit?
They were open, huh?
You've done a really nice job.
Yes, you have done a good job.
Well, with people, people appreciate, appreciate it out.
Yeah, hopefully I figured a good, good replacement too.
Hopefully.
In the civil situation.
Okay, that's all we've got, I'll adjourn the meeting.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.